Good afternoon, everyone. This is the monthly meeting of the Dyton Stormwater Committee. It's Wednesday, September 18th, 2024. It is 1:04 PM. Calling this meeting to order. We are in the upper level meeting room at the Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue, Dyton. This is a public meeting, being video and audio recorded for posting on YouTube. And we have the ID here for the, anyone who wishes to join by Zoom. And I noticed we have some people on, we're ten virtually. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll have a roll call vote.
Barbara Catabian Waterholm, Lisa Caladonia, Constance Andrews.
Farias, industry.
Nancy Gulat. Dave Phillips sent an email, and he was not going to be able to make it, so you can just note that. And if you get the names of those present here, like you usually do, plus whoever is on the video. I didn't hear from Mr. Woods or Mr. Agia, so I don't know if they're coming late or Mr. Hafes, I don't see him there.
No, Mr. Pearson keeps trying to come in and keeps leaving. He's not behaving.
I had heard from Mr. Hafes, and I told him if he wished to sit in, that was fine. Mr. Pearson, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, fine. What projects are you here, are you just sitting in? And then if we, if you have a comment or something, you'll chime in.
Right, yeah. Really, I think the main thing I'm here for would just be the Brook Street solar projects that.
Okay.
Those representing. And aside from that, I saw on the agenda that there were maybe, there might be a request for some updates on some other projects, which at this time we don't have any updates on those other ones. So really, the only thing I'm here for is the Brook Street project.
Okay. Mr. Hafes has not called in. So I'm going to ask for, well, I gotta wait for Lisa to come back. I'm going to ask for a motion to skip for a Brook Street solar at this moment, to see if he comes on. But we do have other projects represented here. But if I don't see him coming on pretty soon, we'll just go back to this and wrap it up, okay? I'm waiting for Lisa to come back. I'll just give you a quick update. Here she comes. So could I get a motion to take Agenda Item 4B MACS Arujo out of order?
I'll motion that.
Second.
We have a motion and a secondary discussion. Hearing that all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Pearson, do you have anything on Arujo MACS?
Maybe not at this time.
Okay. Anybody here from MACS Arujo? Does anyone here on the, on the committee have anything or have any questions about this one? Mr. Pearson, I think the last time I talked to Jim Reardon, you were still waiting for some final as built on this one?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next one. This will be on the agenda again for next month, to see if those as built, as built are in, and if we can get a report from Weston and Sampson about what is in those plans if they come in. I'm going to continue with the agenda. Five, active project updates, Weston and Sampson, a penny. This is 5A, Blue Wave Solar, Tremont and Middle Streets. I see we have Greg and Alexandra. Is anybody in the audience for Blue Wave? Okay. So Greg and Alexandra. And Mr. Pearson, if you have anything you want to ask, feel free. So Greg or Alexandra, if you have anything to report or update or anything at all about the project.
Nope, no major updates. We've got great grass growth out there. I believe at this point, we are waiting for the conservation to close out the permit, and then we can get this one closed out and do the motion to close this one out. And we have the conservation meeting tomorrow. So that's really all I've got at this point, but everything on site is quiet and going well.
And generating?
Yep, generating.
Okay. Do you have anything, Lisa?
We were waiting for Weston and Sampson. They needed to file the necessary ethics paperwork, and they have done that. So Jim Purcell said they were all set to proceed on working on the project. So that was just last week. We haven't gotten any reports as far as conservation goes, any updates. So, you know, tomorrow night will be continuing till October meeting, I'm hopeful before the October meeting.
Okay.
That we'll be able to receive something from Weston and Sampson and close out in October, assuming that the as built match the design.
Okay. Mr. Pearson, do you have any comments or questions on what Lisa just said?
I don't have any comments or questions, no.
Okay. Greg or Alexandra? I expect we're going to get some rain, probably not enough to take care of everything that's dried up and died. Ballpark, when are you looking to replace the evergreens that died? Maybe October, late September?
Yeah, so it's probably going to be later this month. I have our civil contractor sourcing low, so once I get a day, I will keep everyone in the loop.
Is there anything else on Blue Wave Solar?
Nope, just confirming from my end that there, there will not be the meet, we will not discuss this at the conservation tomorrow night.
Well, the hearing, I mean, it's on the agenda. So, you know, if you wanted to come present the asphalt plans to the Conservation Commission, you could do that.
All right, excellent. I'll plan on being there.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, moving on. 5B MACS, well, we've kind of covered Arujo, so we don't need to do that one again. 5C, 102 Sunny's Way Drainage. Anybody here for that? Mr. Ferry?
Hey, just a quick update. So last week, they did an exploratory dig by hand, you know, they called DigSafe. They need to find the elevations, the underground utilities to finish constructing the actual plan that they're going to be utilizing. So that where the utilities are or whatnot, and the metal on top of our structure, it will work, it will flow. It'd be just a little less than the plumber's pitch, but it'll flow nicely.
Okay. Okay, so we'll have this on the next meeting for a progress report or whatever.
And I believe Jim is working, unless you already know, I don't know if Jim got back to you. I believe Jim was trying to get his hands on that actual connection permit.
Jim who?
Agia. The connection permit, I had one before, you, you don't have one, right?
I haven't heard from him about this.
Right, I know he's working on this one.
Oh, okay.
I guess you already heard from him.
No, no, I haven't, I'm sorry, no.
He's working on getting his hands on it, right?
Okay, all right.
I do know, I forget his name, but the gentleman that the owner had working for him on this, the engineer, he did contact me as far as conservation goes, and he's planning to file conservation, he just hasn't done that yet.
Yeah, he's planning on doing the IDA, yes. And this plan that I'm just looking to is for you as a review.
Great.
Yes. That's it at this time.
Okay, thanks, Tom. New business, Zero Horton Street, hear reports act on. I think Tom and Lisa, did you make a site visit to this location? This is the home that sits way off the road.
Yes.
So I received an email from the property owner just asking if we will do a final site visit so we can sign off on the permit. So I guess we need to set up a site visit, so we need some dates. And so if you give me some dates, I'll get in touch with him, just so that we can go out there. I know, did you have anything to report? I know you said, I thought there was one or two minor things, or he was going to take care of something.
Yeah, he's going to do some minor, it's work, Lisa's already aware of it. I don't believe it interferes with the stormwater. That leave permit expires early October, if I'm right.
Yeah, we did extend it, but yeah, the deadline's coming up. Any particular day of the week that's better? And I'm thinking a morning?
Not a Monday morning.
No, I didn't say that. Mondays aren't good for me for the most part, but a morning meeting.
Tuesday morning?
How's Tuesday, October 1st, or Wednesday, October 2nd? Oh, yeah, okay, either of those. Well, speak of, I thought you were going to zoom in, welcome.
Yeah, either one would work.
Okay. What time in the morning you want to do this? You want to do it at 9?
Sure.
All right, so these are tentative. I'll try October 1st, I'll get in touch with the property owner, and see if we can do October 1st at 9:00 AM, or October 2nd at 9:00 AM. And send out an email.
And what's the address, 2651 is it? No, 2, sorry. Do you know the address there?
No, but I'll put it in the email when I send it out.
Okay.
Because we just identified this as Zero Horton Street. I did send him an email, so he knew that we would talk about setting up a site visit, but other than that, we weren't going to really discuss anything, because the report I got was that what was out there was minor, and would not hold up the site visit and signing off on the stormwater permit, so.
Yeah, the site's very, mostly stable, and.
Is the driveway paved all the way in? Or is it gravel?
Yeah, it's cut to binder all the way into some surfaces. I forget the date he's going to do the final paving. He's going with the stream.
Yeah, oh, and the bridge is going to be adding some.
Is it a bridge or a culvert?
We're calling it a bridge.
Oh, okay, all right. Last time I was there, it was water with ducks swimming down the river, or the brook, or whatever it was. So when I get the date, I'll send out this email. I am not going to post this, but it's okay if we have a quorum, which means a typical site visit. You can look around, you can ask questions, there'll be no formal discussion, and there will be no votes taken. If we have to, I should, when we have to take that vote, it'll be at the next stormwater meeting, which I assume is going to be to sign off, vote to close out the stormwater permit, but you will be able to ask any questions. So this way, if whoever wants to go can go, and we won't have, we won't have formal action which would require a posting, okay? All right, so I will get back to you. Heather, I will get back to you with that. And on the October agenda, we'll have probably a final report on this project. Okay, I'm going to return to Agenda Item 4A, Brook Street Solar. What we did was just pass over it, because I was waiting for you to appear on the screen. So on the screen, we have Mr. Pearson from Weston and Sampson. Did you read the report that I sent late last night or early this morning? I'm not sure which it was. So I sent this out to everybody, I don't know if you had a chance, it was an attachment to an email. And it was issued by Mr. Reardon and Mr. Pearson from Weston and Sampson. I am going to read it. Did you get a copy of that, Mrs. Spocelai? You have one for her? You can have that. This is a public, this is a public document. Status, September 16th, 2024, Dyton Stormwater Committee, Planning Board and Conservation Commission, 1111 Somerset Avenue, Dyton, regarding 893 Brook Street Solar Field. Review of application for major modification of special permit, second review, via Stormwater Committee, Planning Board and Conservation Commission. In accordance with your request, Weston and Sampson has performed a review of the latest submission materials associated with the above referenced application. Our initial review of this major modification application was summarized in our previous letter dated July 10th, 2024. On July 15th, 2024, the applicant submitted the following documents, which we have considered as part of this latest, as part of this latest review. Common response to review of special permit modification request, Brook Street Solar, Level Design Group, three pages, July 15th, 2024. Basin 1 and 3 repair, design sheet, Level Design Group, one sheet, July 15th, 2024. Rooting diagram, basin repair, hydro CAD report 2, Level Design Group, 25 pages printed, July 15th, 2024. From our previous findings, we had recommended that the applicant submit a revised design for stormwater basin number 1, the northernmost stormwater basin on the site. This is also the largest basin there is. The largest basin on the site, stormwater is the site. To address the issue that the basin has experienced periods of prolonged standing water, the applicant has presented the modifications to this basin as the sole subject of their application for a modification to the special permit. One of our suggestions has been that the basin could be redesigned to function as a stormwater detention basin rather than its currently proposed function as an infiltration basin. We had previously commented on the proposed design in our letter from July 10th, 2024. Those comments are reproduced for reference in gray text below, with updated comments in boldface type based on our review of the most current submission. So these were the comments that were first submitted from Weston and Sampson. The applicant appears to have embraced the concept of converting the infiltration basin to a stormwater detention basin. Plans show the addition of a layer of stone with an underdrain system and a four-inch outlet pipe that will allow for a slow controlled release of stormwater discharging to the northeast of the basin. We agree that this is a reasonable approach, given that recent site investigations have shown that the site seems to be unsuitable for the installation of an infiltration basin. That being said, some degree of stormwater infiltration will still be possible in this basin in perpetuity to the maximum extent practicable, since a deep layer of coarse sand was previously installed below the basin bottom. The approach of converting basin 1 to a detention basin may require a waiver from town bylaws and from the Mass Stormwater Handbook to allow the applicant to provide recharge only to the maximum extent practicable due to existing site conditions. We offer no objection to such a waiver. So this next sentence was underlined in that previous letter. The applicant should identify the applicable regulatory standards that they are seeking a waiver from, and provide those in a waiver request to the board. So the update that's part of this letter, 916, 2024, from Weston and Sampson, the comment is, Level Design Group, the engineer, has suggested a waiver request from Section 5444 of the zoning bylaw. This section requires storm drainage designed to conform with current Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Management standards, and with the Town of Dyton Stormwater bylaw regulations. More specifically, the request would be for a waiver to the provisions of said regulations to allow, to allow the project to comply with the stormwater recharge requirements only to the maximum extent practicable. And this next sentence is underlined. We recommend that such waiver be granted in light of the existing soil conditions, which render the installation of stormwater recharge BMPs infeasible, BMPs, best management practice. I think the reference to the zoning board is not correct, it's not the planning board. Zoning hasn't been involved in this, as far as I know.
Should be planned for.
I believe so. He suggested a waiver from Section 544 of the zoning bylaw. I'm just going to pencil in planning board.
Nancy, Mr. Ahmed.
Yes, Ahmed.
It's supposed to be planning board, and we actually reached out, this Easter Day is on the call on Zoom, we reached out to Mr. Carvalho, and Nick from Level Design reached out to Mr. Carvalho, saying that the regulation that's cited here, the original report, doesn't apply to this project, and there shouldn't be a waiver required, and Mr. Carvalho responded in writing in an email saying that this, he agrees with us, so there's no waiver required.
Okay. Mr. Pearson, did you hear that?
And Mr. Reardon was copied on the email as well.
Mr. Reardon is away.
Yeah, I know he is.
So I'm having a little bit of a difficult time hearing Mr. Hafes, so I wasn't quite sure what he said exactly.
Okay, I questioned, actually a correction, because the reference was the zoning board, and it's supposed to be the planning board. So we all agree to that. Mr. Hafes, if you would just repeat the part about you contacted Mr. Cavalo, and your conversation.
Yes, Level Design, when we received the report in early July, on July 10th or 11th, we sent an email to Ms. Easterday, and she forwarded to Mr. Cavalo, showing that the standard doesn't apply to the project, and we, there shouldn't, we shouldn't be required to submit a waiver. And Mr. Cavalo responded agreeing with, with Mr. Fasten Dora from Level Design, and Ms. Easterday, if she's on the call, I think she forwarded the email to both of you, Mr. Pearson and Mr. Reardon.
Okay, well, in any case, if the board wishes to give an opinion as to what they think is applicable and isn't, I would certainly defer to the board as far as their interpretation of what's applicable. I, you know, I was, when I made that comment, I was going upon my own interpretation of what I thought applied. So, you know, if, if they differ on that, then I'll certainly defer to their view on that.
I can forward the email again to everyone here.
Yes, I want to be copied on that. Mr. Pearson, I'm going to, I will also state that, when I saw that initially, and questioned zoning, and said, no, that's planning, but my other thought was, actually, if the waiver was required, it would have to come to stormwater, technically not the planning board, and I'm not aware that any of this is applicable. So again, yeah, that's fine, you read it, and you stated what you, what your opinion was. But again, having talked to Mrs. Easterday, and her communications with Mr. Cavalo, when the Stormwater Committee took action back in August on this particular project, our approval for them to move ahead was conditional based on the planning board. So I think we're all set there, because I have heard nothing back from planning that would cause concern that this, any action Stormwater took was not appropriate, okay? So I'm going to continue reading. Item number two, this was from the previous email, excuse me, the previous letter. Plans show the addition of a stone layer in the basin floor. Calculations indicate that the bottom of this layer will be at an elevation of 75.5, and the top of the layer will be at 76.5. The plans provide the top elevation, but do not provide the bottom elevation of the layer thickness. So underlying this is the recommendation. We recommend that the engineer provide this information on the plans, and the response from Weston and Sampson. The plans have been revised to show the bottom elevation of the stone as requested, this comment has been addressed. Recommendation number three from the, the previous, excuse me, letter. The calculations for basin 1 include an allowance for infiltration to occur at a rate of 0.27 inches per hour, as one of the quote "outlets" unquote, for water to leave the basin during the modeled storm events, based on recent experience, which has shown that the basin does not seem capable of de-watering at a reasonable rate. It seems that it would be a better approach to assume that the basin will be entirely incapable of having infiltration occur as a quote "outlet" unquote, for stormwater. Recommendation, underlined, we recommend that the engineer revise the calculations to eliminate the infiltration outlet. And the September 16th reply comment from Weston and Sampson. The engineer has revised the stormwater model to eliminate the infiltration quote "outlet" unquote, from the stormwater basin. This comment has been addressed. And in closing this letter, it says, in addition to the foregoing items which relate to basin 1, as part of the special permit modification request, the applicant has also presented some corrective actions on the submitted plan that pertain to basin 3, which is the southeastern basin on the site. The applicant has presented these latter actions as measures that are intended to bring the basin into compliance with the original approved design, and that they therefore do not require modification to the permit. We concur with the assessment. The corrective actions that are proposed at basin 3 consist of some regrading of the basin floor to ensure positive drainage toward the basin outlets, and some changes to the basin outlet pipe ends within the basin. These adjustments have been included in the stormwater calculations that were submitted. Underlying this, the actions proposed at basin 3 as presented in the plans and calculations appear to meet the intent of the originally permitted design, and we offer no objection. Weston and Sampson appreciates the opportunity to present our findings, and we look forward to discussing the next steps toward resolving the issues related to stormwater management at this project site. Please contact Jim Reardon if you have any questions. And it has contact information here for Jim Reardon, and it was signed by James Pearson and Jim Reardon. So this is the latest, I assume this is the final report of what everyone was waiting for. Are you going to be at the planning board meeting tonight? So at tonight's meeting, will you be told when you can start construction, or move ahead with excavation, or whatever it is you're going to do down there?
I think the decision in credit says provision on this report, so.
Okay, but I'm just wondering, at tonight's meeting, is there going to be any mention? I mean, my thought is that, considering how long this is, we've been working on this, we, the town and you, I'm looking to find out when is construction going to start. So if that's the interpretation of this. I'm looking to find out when is construction going to start, so if that's the interpretation of this, when do you think you're going to start excavation or whatever?
My first thought is when it's next week.
Okay, now, the other thing we all know, when the work is done and everything is in its final shape, it's got to pass the test, okay? That determines whether or not you can go live. So up to this point, I believe you have the authority to do the work that's been recommended and reviewed, and you've gotten the sign off from Weston and Sampson.
And about the test, I think we've discussed before, if there's no rain for a month or two months, we would like to bring in like water trucks.
Okay. That is something that, as your work progresses, and we see if Mother Nature cooperates, any any testing that's done that is not natural rainfall, I would ask Weston and Sampson to give the town some advice, okay? We have not encountered this anywhere on any of our stormwater basins, on any of the solar farms. And I just want to make sure that if water is brought in to do the testing, it's brought in with sufficient quantity and major, I'll call it downfall or dumping of water, so that as close as possible, natural conditions can be observed and tested as timed to see if the basin, especially the big one, drains properly. So, yeah, before the actual testing begins, obviously, if we get lots of rain, testing can be done, observations can be done. But if that doesn't happen, before water is actually brought in, I would want to hear from Weston and Sampson. Mr. Pearson, do you have any comments on that?
Well, first of all, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess I would say that I don't typically see on projects where there are conditions that are required of the applicant where they have to do some kind of testing. Usually with these things, if they pass muster from the perspective of calculations and design materials that have been submitted, usually we consider that to be sufficient to demonstrate that these things will be able to work. And given the fact that they've now converted this into a detention basin, we now know that it will be capable of fully draining, that is, of course, barring any malfunction that might come as a result of lack of maintenance, such as an outlet pipe clogging or something, but to me, that's a whole different issue than the maintenance issue. So the issue on the table here was that we had a stormwater basin that was collecting water, and the water was sitting in the basin and not draining within a reasonable period of time. Based on the way that they have designed this, if they construct it properly based upon their proposed corrective actions, then we would expect that problem to be non-existent. So I really think that probably the most expedient thing to do would just for there to be just a site visit at the conclusion of construction to confirm that it was built per plan. Because I feel confident in saying that if they do build it per plan, then we would not expect to see any more standing water issues.
Okay, and as I said, we've never done this before, to bring water in to test basins. But this solar farm is a unique situation, it's been around since two thousand and eighteen at least. Because of the nature of what has occurred there, and Mr. Agia, the building commissioner, is not present today. But he has repeatedly stated that if the basins don't work, he will not give them the go-live. So, we have discussed this with Mr. Hafiz in the past, and I think in this particular instance, the necessity to test the ability for this basin, the big one especially, to drain in a timely manner is something we are going to have to require. That's why we've talked about it so often. So I don't dispute what you're saying on normal conditions, but if in fact, the Mother Nature doesn't cooperate, and we can't get sufficient rainfall to actually observe how the basins drain and how the systems work, then we will request that water be brought in, in which case, we'll let Weston and Sampson know. And if somebody wants to observe it, fine, but we just want you to know that without sufficient rainfall, the town will require water to be brought in. Again, only because of the nature of this entire project. Does anybody on the committee have comments or questions relative to anything either I've read in the the letter from Weston and Sampson, or anything that you've heard so far? Mr. Hafiz?
Yes, I wanted to discuss when would Weston and Sampson would like to be on site, and I'm going to suggest after we've built all the pipelines, like the whole net of pipes there, and before we cover it with the gravel, the gravel layer, I think that's a good inspection point, and we don't cover it until the inspection has been completed.
Mr. Pearson, did you hear that?
I did, and I don't have any objection to it, that sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, so when your construction company gets all the pipes in and everything, but before they bury it, if you get in touch with Weston and Sampson and let them know, maybe even email a picture and say, this is what it looks like right now, can you come take a look? Okay? Does that work, Mr. Pearson?
Yes, and if I could ask as a courtesy if we could receive as much notice as possible as to the time and as to the date and time that we need to be there, that would be appreciated.
Okay, so if you could, as Mary, when you send the email out and say, we're starting construction today, excavation begins, whatever the date is, and if it takes, let's say, as you move towards the end of the week, if it looks like it's not going to be completed that week, at the end of the week, you send the email out that says, the project is, the installation of the drainage system will be wrapped up next week approximately on whatever day, which means it's all in, but it's not covered, but that way, Weston and Sampson can arrange to have their engineer come out. They'll have staff available, and anyone at the town level, on the boards, or Mr. Agia, anyone, conservation, anyone involved with this can go take a look, just so if there's any questions, we can get this all done. Any comments, again, from the, I'll get to you in a minute. Anything from the committee, any questions, concerns, Mr. Ferry? Is that, are we going to need a detail there for the equipment that's coming in, or is this just like the small equipment?
Yeah.
Like they did for the test holes, you know?
It's regular, they're going in and out, they wouldn't be opening up for us to see.
Okay, okay. Okay, very good. Mrs. Boselley, did you have a question?
Boselley, sixteen eighty Pine Street, yeah, they have started planting the plants. And, but I just have a concern, I don't know how to, who would check it? They started planting the plants in the forested area and along the side, so it seems. But there's this little machine that's, I'm not sure, so I only present it to you, that seems to be riding in the swale. It seems to be, from my perspective, I don't know, because I haven't been on it, but if a little machine is riding in the swale, I'm afraid it's going to flatten the swale. So is there, what committee would check the swale? Because I don't know. If it's doing it, maybe it's not doing it, I don't even know. But I present it because this little machine is there.
Oh, Audrey, or to the west side?
To the south side, yes, Audrey Lane area.
South of Audrey.
South of Audrey, along the fence, the northern fence. There's a row of trees, then the swale, and then a row of trees. I see a little machine running back and forth there, and I just don't know. The swale is so important to that project. So I don't even know, I mean, maybe it's fine, maybe it's not, I don't know.
Take a look at it.
Yeah, thanks for letting us know.
Okay, and one other thing, Mr. Ferry. If you're going to Brook Street, the first sign on the left should be a sign that said, it's two signs actually, it's one that says bear right when you get to Pine Street, and then it's also one for someone coming south on Pine Street to bear left. The sign has been hit, and you cannot see the bear right. So can that be fixed?
It will.
Okay.
Yeah, we have several in town, yes.
Okay, and one more thing, Lisa, have you gotten that report that you were?
The SWPs, no.
You have now? Thank you.
Okay, I did have a communication from Todd Pilling.
Yeah.
And he said, everything should be on site, so if you go out with Mr. Ferry to check on the plantings or the swale or whatever, see if they're there. But he told me he read them, up until the point of his leaving.
Right, so, so then I just want to know, are we going to be looking at SWPs from, when did you start, twenty one?
Yeah.
From twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, and then none from this year, or like, when did you guys stop? What is the period you had when you do SWPs for?
During the period of construction, and after that, until the project was stabilized, which goes back to like a year or something.
Goes back to a year from now, you're thinking?
When the site was fully stabilized, yes.
I guess I just have a question for Jim Pearson. Jim, in your experience, when sites are less kind of just not completed, do they continue to do the SWP inspections? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. So, there is a procedure where if a site is going to go dormant for a period, and there's going to be no construction activity, you can sort of do like some temporary stabilization, and as long as that's in place, and as long as it's been inspected and it looks functional, then the site can remain dormant, and then you can go for a period where you have little, little, little if any inspections occurring because the site, you know, again, if it's in a dormant state and it's been temporarily stabilized, then you would not expect there to be any issues at that point.
But usually, wouldn't the town be asked if they can stop with the SWP inspections? And, you know, do like a dormant phase like that?
The site is fully stabilized, just to clarify, the site is fully stabilized, not temporarily stabilized, has been fully stabilized during that dormant period?
I mean, yeah, I guess that's my main question is, do you think they should have been providing us with the SWP inspections all along, or no?
Well, you know, it comes down to a matter of, if the site has been stabilized, if it's in a state of stability, let's say, then you would not expect to need to be having SWP inspections coming in during that period.
Right, so, but we only, I guess I'd have to look at the time period, because I do have photos from the site, but I feel like there was a lot of time that went by that we did not get the SWP inspections, and we did not have the site stable.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can't really speak to that specifically, because, you know, we haven't been in a position where we've been retained to be looking at the site and comparing it against, you know, the periods that they've been.
I can pull up some air photos on the air map and figure out, you know, a timeframe, like a six-month timeframe, and then compare it to the SWP inspections that are out there, I guess that's what I'll do.
Okay, so just if I can comment on the SWP inspections, the first water incident, like rain incident, that water left the site, I remember everyone from the town was on site, and Nick Fassendora was there, and you were there.
At the beginning, right, but I'm talking about like now, in the past couple of years, I mean, I haven't seen inspections since around the time Todd left.
And then Nick was asked to train the people on site, and they were trained, and they were doing the SWP reports, and I found some of the emails sent to you
Okay.
from that period, and you asked for some corrections, and then it was done the way you wanted.
And the person went twenty two?
Twenty one during construction. And then, since then, they were asked, I don't know if it was by the storm, by the stormwater or by the Conservation Commission to leave them on site, which what they did throughout this whole time, until the project was stabilized, we demobilized everything from the site, the site office, everything was demobilized from the site, the site has been stable, there has no, there hasn't been any incidents that were reported to the town.
Well, then what if because no one's doing any inspections?
Well, if there's any water, we always get emails, if there is anything, we always get emails. The Conservation Commission in this town is the most involved Conservation Commission I've seen in my life. I don't think something would be going on wrong on site, and you wouldn't know, and you wouldn't let me know about it.
But I don't have the time to be there, and that's why we were caught. I'm not.
Mr. Ferry, did you wish to comment?
Yes, from where I am, my office in here, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I've got this. So I think what we're experiencing is unintentional dormant time.
Right.
So we have this repair that needed to happen, investigation needed to happen, so it was unintentional for this dormant period, if that's what we should call it, happened. It wasn't planned, if it was, mitigation would have been in place. Here and now, you're not going to have records between the last report and now.
Okay, but now the site is going to be worked on again.
Correct.
So.
So that's a different question, you were alluding to that gap, that gap was unintentional.
Well, right, but even if it was unintentional, do we have any breaches, do we know, I mean, how do we know?
Yeah, you're not going to know unless you do an inspection. So moving forward with the active work, now you're back to B and P's. I'm the one, which way incorporate your reports, Lisa, so if you want them in email fashion, now's the time.
No, I mean, I think they need to continue with the SWP inspections, and they need to copy the Stormwater Committee, because the SWP is a requirement under the Stormwater Permit, as well as.
I don't think it's continue, it's start up again, because he is correct, there was a period of dormancy. Now, after the second reconstruction, when they dug up all the debris and the boulders and all that, and the new system was put in, and it didn't drain properly. I can specifically remember Jason being there and saying, he's going to dig up, I said, don't you touch anything, don't you dig any.
Yeah, that was last year.
Don't disturb anything. It was, now, getting back to the SWPs, according to the email I got from Todd Pilling, he left here, I'm going to say around last June, not the one that just went by a year ago.
Yeah.
He said up to that point, he did see reports, and he says they're on site, which is what Mr. Hafiz has said.
Right.
So, the next thing that I remember happening after we told Mr. LeChance, don't do anything. Well, I already said, don't do anything, don't go back there, don't do anything. The next thing that happened was because the basins didn't drain after the second construction project. There was more discussion, in the meantime, Weston and Sampson was hired to come onboard, and that's. And that's when the decision was made, we need to go down and do test holes in the big basin. They, Basin 3, they inspected, this is, this is mine or this can be fixed, but Basin 1 is a problem. That's when there was some excavation done in the basins. Not outside the basin, not around it or anything else. Specifically in the, in that, because Mr. Ferry and I were there when that occurred, as was Mr. Pearson. And um, excuse me, Mr. LeChance and two heavy equipment operators. So my understanding, uh, Tom, is that since that day, what has occurred is the revision, discussion and all that of the plans, and we're at the point now that what has been proposed has been approved. And there will now be excavation and construction uh, starting up again. Can you think of anything that would have disturbed anything other than uh, when the second system failed? And I know I told Ms. Dilchad, don't you dig anything. Don't do anything. And so that was stop everything, so it went dormant. And then nothing was done again until Weston and Sampson was hired and the test holes were dug. And to the best of my knowledge, there's been no other excavation since the test holes were dug, the samples of the soil were taken, and then it was, those holes were filled in. Analysis was done and the discussion took place and the plans were revised. So that dormancy period, even though we had the period of test holes, the test holes did not reach the level of areas of disturbance that would have required SWPs, SWP monitoring reports. You, you agree with that? Do, you wanna agree with that?
I do agree.
Okay.
The only thing I, you know, I'm just concerned that, you know, no one thought to come and app, or ask us, can we stop doing SWPs now? Right, is the site stabilized enough so we can stop doing SWPs?
I would take that's all announced to, to identify that.
Oh, okay, partially, but you know, he's got contractors there. But now going forward, are you gonna have the weekly and the storm, SWP inspections per the SWP?
My question is, is it required? Like it's, I, I don't find it required, like does this building provide uh, SWPs?
Jim, could you, could you help Mr. Hafaz on this? Cause um, it, were they gonna be repairing the basins? I think that at least in the area of the basins, someone should be doing this erosion control inspections weekly and after significant storm events, correct? Mr. Pearson?
Yeah, during basin construction, I would agree, yeah, because of the site disturbing activity.
Okay, so and, and you need, need to obviously make sure the erosion controls are really in good shape, have some extra on site, just like you're starting over again, because those things, I'm sure have been trampled by a whole bunch of deer and everything else. There's probably all sorts of holes in them. But at least in the area of the basins.
Sure, and there are some uh, on the drawings, there are provisions for all the erosion control, yeah, erosion control, so for sure. We can, and we can provide.
And then keep them on site. And it would be great if you could provide us with copies.
Okay.
You know?
We'll, we'll send them by email.
That'd be better. Because if I have to go there, I mean.
No, we'll send them by you.
There's so much going on in town for me to have to go to every site.
If there are hard copies on site, I would request that there be added to the file plus the emails. So the emails are sent, print them out and have them, just stick one in there so that when this project is done, if somebody says, I wanna look at this from beginning to end, we don't want it to come up to a point and stop and say, oh, you gotta now go look at emails.
Right.
Uh, so um, when those SWP reports start again, um.
With the construction?
Right, with this new construction. Um, emails are fine, but I would request that print the email and just stick it in the box so it's all there, one complete file.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Bosa Lake?
You're talking about disturbance of the land, does it count for the trees that they cut down?
No, in a strip.
The, the disturbance of the land, you, you were talking?
Talking about the reconstruction of the big basin.
Okay. So SWP's more concerned about um, oh, segmentation?
Okay.
Soil.
Okay.
So open areas of soil.
Does it matter when they cut down the trees though, if they put down logs and, or stumping? Cause they did cut down the trees and on their, on that land.
Did they stop? No.
We did not stop.
No, they didn't stop, so, no.
Okay, um, and one other thing, they are aware that they're supposed to be putting trees on the northern berm? Okay, cause they haven't done that. They did the east berm.
Yeah, we cannot do it before we fix the berm, right, because we'd be going in and out.
Well, I thought you would, well, it's not going as far as you're going in, so.
We'll put them on the.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, anything else on, anything, anyone heard today about the project on Brook Street? No? Okay, so um, we're going to move on to 6B Hunter's Hill. I got your email and you had some questions on documents I requested relative to the pilot. Okay, so if after this meeting you catch up with me, I'm gonna try to be at the planning board meeting tonight, but either that or just send an email, but give me an idea of what it is you need information on, okay? All right, I did report to the Board of Assessors this morning that you have asked that that be reactivated. And what was in the email that I sent to you and the documents and information I requested, so. And I've sent a um email to the Board of Selectmen requesting placement of an article on the warrant to approve our pilot agreement, assuming we've got it ready and set to go, okay? Okay. Um, 6B Hunter's Hill. Uh, Mr. Pearson, I think you have some involvement, you, meaning Weston and Sampson, has some involvement with Hunter's Hill? Am I correct?
Um, yes, we have, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we were retained to do a review um, for the Conservation Committee to review the NOI submission and also to review the stormwater improvements associated with a community center that's being built uh, within the Hunter's Hill subdivision.
And their review has not been discussed with the commission yet.
Okay, okay.
Hoping to get the output before the meeting.
Uh, if, if there are um presentations or information or paperwork that is headed for planning or conservation or any other town board or official, uh, obviously stormwater won't make final determinations till we all understand where we all are with whatever concerns we have that are shared.
Thank you very much. It's Evan Watson, W Engineering, represents the applicant. As you said, we're we already have a stormwater permit, this is the Hunter's Hill subdivision. So if you recall, we came in, we received order conditions, a special permit and a stormwater permit uh, to construct the homes, uh, and all drainage utilities, et cetera, for the project. Part of, one of the conditions of our special permit, and one of the things that was always planned along, the way was to add a community center for the use of the residents of the, the community. At the time, the design of that wasn't squared away, so we did not include it, but we promised that we would uh, come back and update everybody when we were ready, and that's where we're at now.
Okay.
So um, we are on the agenda tonight for the planning board to update the special permit as a minor modification. And we are before the commission with a new notice of intent to do just this work. And as you mentioned, uh, it is before Weston and Sampson, they did give a review letter which I copied you guys on, as well as our response to comments. And we were able to address all their comments. Again, I haven't heard back from them, I'm expecting that they're going to say everything is good to go. Uh, again, we didn't have any arguments with anything that they wanted us to do. So I can step through our proposal. Uh, on the cover sheet, just see where the community center is proposed. It's along Hunter's, uh, Club Hill Drive on the left side. And then part of what we're looking to do, there's an isolated non-jurisdictional, by the state standards, wetland. But the conservation, local bylaw does consider that jurisdictional area. So we're proposing to fill that in, but also replicate the wetland area as well as do a buffer zone enhancement. In that area, the original plan, there was a road proposed right through here, so that, by previous owner, uh, was excavated and repaired and then everything kinda stopped. So there's some exposed earth and, I don't know, let's see. I should also mention that uh, Weston and Sampson did do a sidewalk and Lisa and I did a sidewalk at that area yesterday.
That green area is the, that's the area where the replication will be?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so the existing wetland, if you don't mind me, is all right here.
Okay.
They're gonna replicate right next to the existing border, regitated well.
Okay.
So on this plan, on the top of the page is Clubhouse Drive, we wrote. And if anybody's been out there lately, Clubhouse Drive is actually paved. Uh, the drainage infrastructure is in and it's looking pretty great, actually. They have uh, three foundations in, one of which is just about done, I think I saw the furniture in it for the um, model home. And so occupied this area was a post-community center. We have a uh, two pickleball courts, shuffle ball, and a watching court. Along the pool and surrounding patio. And then for the access, we have a driveway that comes up through here and comes back on to Clubhouse Drive. And then uh, with all new subdivisions now, the postmaster general doesn't wanna deliver mail to every single individual house, so it's common that they request that we have a mailbox kiosk, so we added that there with the drive and turner. Uh, as far as new drainage infrastructure, again, I mentioned that the previous design had a roadway that was there as well as many additional lots all through that zone. So the drainage piping, the stormwater basin, everything was designed to accommodate much more impervious area, much more disturbed area that's going to it, what we're proposing now. So we submitted calculations to Weston and Sampson. Uh, their review letter agreed that, you know, the basin is adequate to handle that. As well as all piping, catch bases, et cetera. The only thing that they did mention was that the basin that was installed, and I think you may recall when we walked out there early on, there's a, a wet basin there that's just all water, uh, at the end of box wood lane. But there was, there was not a four bay that was in there. So they just mentioned that in order to get the full 80% TSS removal, they requested that we add a four bay, so.
That's basin four?
Yes, basin four, yeah. And again, that's, that's the basin that takes all the drainage for all of this area that goes down to there. So what we can do is we can add a fresh soil there. It's been sized to handle the amount of impervious area that it's going to it. And then while we're there, there is some sediment that's right in front of, right where the pipe came out. So then you take that away and then there was never a flare end put on the end, so we'll put a flare end on there to, to just upgrade and retrofit what we have. We're proposing some roof infiltrators, so it's the same thing that we've been, that we promised we would do for all the individual houses. We take the roof and infiltrate it with some stone infiltrators there, spill area. And then we have erosion control um, around the area. I mean, it is upgrading to all the resource areas, it's kinda strange if the resource areas are actually upgraded of our site, but it'll serve as a good limit of work so that we don't go into any of the other renovating zones. And then for the mitigation area, and this, the wetland back here, you can see the buffer zones are highlighted in yellow. And the 50 foot is in pink. And we're proposing to do a, uh, for the area, about 8,200 square feet of mitigation. We did say that there is a little pool right here that we are treating as a verve pool. So adjacent to that, in our mitigation area, we're gonna activate that down and attempt to create additional verve pool habitat. This is, um, it's probably about the size of this table here, it's not very big, so we can enhance that by adding some more water area there. Uh, we have a planting list, and then outside of that, through here is where all that soil is excavated. So we'll add some topsoil, uh, we specify seed mix, and we'll add plantings as well as through here. And then, um, again, the original drainage design that was done back in 2006, since there was a road here, just picked up all the drainage that came off of this area and brought it into the detention basin, so instead of doing that, since there's no road, we propose the SWO that goes off the beach and continues here and gets picked up in this catch basin and brought to the basin to accommodate the original design. Our site can decide some details, mostly, one of those construction entrance, the sidewalk berm, et cetera, and then we have the seed mix. So again, what I'd like to do is ask that we essentially just modify the existing permit that we have to allow for this construction, considering that we already have a um construction period pollution prevention plan in place, we have a post-construction pollution prevention plan in place. We've done all of our stormwater counts, et cetera, that's, this commission reviewed and approved. And this would just be to accommodate the additional disturbed area that we'll look into accommodating here. Um, so certainly I'd entertain any questions that anybody has. We're looking to close the, hoping to have everything squared away with planning board tonight. And then um, the same thing, we'll be asking for a, to close the hearing at Conservation tomorrow. And if everything goes well, they'd like to get started right away so that the construction happens during the, you know, dry period. If we're you know, when all the permits are in place is when they're gonna get going, so it'd be best to be able to do that um, before the winter comes, because the site does turn from being a nice dry construction site to a pretty sloppy mud pit.
So, so you heard the previous discussion, so uh, they're gonna do construction too and they're hoping for dry? But after that, they need rain?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah. Well, this, this is the perfect time for that, because it's nice and dry now, and then once Halloween hits, and all the leaves are gone, even without rain, we're just gonna have, everything's gonna be better.
Okay, so the minor modification is going to the planning board, you're also going before the CONCOM to take care of whatever is relevant to what they're doing. When you said a modification, a minor modification to the permit, were you looking to do anything to the stormwater permit or that's all set? And these are just, because of the minor modification, these are the other things you have to do?
We're not looking to modify the drainage at all, other than adding the um this fresh storm berm for the four bay. this crushstone burn for the four bay.
Okay.
Everything else is already constructed, already accounted for.
Okay, so I would request that you put something in writing to indicate that. The only additional work that would be involved, that would involve the stormwater committee is what you just described. Just so that we have it, and it will be in the file. So that if anybody says, wait a minute, they had a stormwater permit, there's nothing here about this, you know, what you just described with the crushstone. So, um, I believe once you are all set with planning and CONCOM, and you give that to us, obviously, we coordinate with them. If any board committee commission or town officials says, hold everything, then we're gonna hold everything. But as long as everything is moving along, just like with that other project that we approved conditionally. And I realize we don't need to take a formal vote to approve what you're talking about. All of the records would indicate you checked with everybody, and everything that was discussed or agreed to, or you're gonna provide some crushed stone or whatever. All of this has been taken care of. This isn't like, nobody knew about that. Where did that come from? Just so that, once it gets going, it can keep going and continue on. And unless something really unusual happens, the stormwater committee would do inspections and things like that, but we would not be, we, we would be getting monthly updates, which is the kind of things we get on some of these solar farms that we're still waiting for as-built plans or stuff like that. So that would be basically the only thing we'd need going forward.
Oh, look at those SWIM inspections at yard again, right?
You got those, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got, you got copies.
Yes, yes, I get the emails. Yeah. So, does anybody on the committee have any questions? Evan?
Questions?
Comments?
I already shared it with Evan. I, I, that wetlands that you could do, produced in the, I believe is man-made anyways. And they're actually making a better ecosystem on that person, yeah.
That, where they're gonna replicate is
Pretty cool.
From the previous construction that was done, or excavation?
Yeah.
And then, yeah, my only other question after a site visit, I was thinking of this stuff. Especially the enhancement area where I saw a lot of that good flowering stuff in there. You're not gonna really, you're not gonna remove that soil, right? So it is just, yeah. So obviously, it will still be there as well.
Yeah, so this area all up in here is all vegetated. All we're looking to do is embed within it.
Well, I was thinking.
And then through here, there is this, but we can use that. Because we do have to excavate that down to create that swale.
And that's gonna be maintained?
Yes.
Meaning like, cut a couple times a year?
Right, exactly. And then make sure it's free of litter and tree falls and things like that.
But it can have flowering stuff in it?
It's almost as though an impediment to the drainage.
Yeah.
You have the, you know, if you, if you don't maintain it at all, just like a basin, mother nature will take over, turn it into forests.
Right, so like a couple times a year, you try it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why we didn't have plantings along the side. But, you know, when in construction, the, you know, you wanna do the least amount of work possible. You know, so when they excavate this material, they're gonna end up with topsoil. And the best place to put that would be, you know, in the areas that have them topsoil. So you're right, that, that material that's excavated will be placed next to where it came from.
So when this whole development is finished, all the houses are built and everything else, if anyone were to drive through there, would they see areas that, I will say, are natural vegetation areas? Got nothing to do with drainage. In other words, as this project was being built, it was like, we don't need to do anything over there, leave it alone. I think of that patch they got in front of the Aggie school. I don't know if you've seen it, the natural. You, you see all the green lawns, you drive by and you see all these weeds. And they got a sign out there explaining to you, this is natural vegetation. I think they mow it once or twice, but they don't, it's not lawn. So will there be areas like that? I call them natural areas, somewhere around this?
Yeah, so this is a conservation subdivision. And I don't remember the total number, so there's two-hundred-and-twenty-five acres of natural vegetation.
I know when we toured it, a lot was pointed out. And we went down to the area that hasn't been developed. It was, it was already wild. But I was just wondering, you know, what would be left?
What is left is primarily forested.
Okay.
The areas like the clear areas where there'll be lawn.
Yeah.
There, there will not, there won't be any forest.
Okay, yeah, because I mean,
Massive forested areas.
Most housing developments in this town, if they didn't clearcut all the trees, and we were fortunate that some mature trees were left, every strip of soil, it's not got a tree grown on it, there's, it's grass right to the curb or the sidewalk. And something this huge, and again, thinking of when we toured it, and obviously where we went, it was all wild, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, and part of the amenities of the open space, you know, when I have a community center, there is another detention basin planned here, and this one that we actually just completely constructing on the north side. And they were the same style basin, the wet basin. I'll be able to probably construct it better than this, the one that the other people did. So that will be a feature. They're looking to add a walking trail through the open space to, so you can go and actually view those. We expect that those are gonna have wildlife in them, that you can take a look at. And then there's another walking trail that goes out, I think it actually goes out to the power line. And then it's behind some of the horse stables and things that are over there. So this, there actually is, the open, the two-hundred acres of open space will be accessible, accessible. I, I know for a fact that the community residents now actually go down and take a walk around here.
So that, in addition to its natural state, there will be animals, whatever lives there, deer.
A lot of deer.
There's a lot of animals.
No hunting, right?
It's Hunter's Hill.
I just, I just, I just want to clarify the part about hunting. Since, since we have a hunter on our committee, we have to just make sure there's no misunderstanding.
Right.
You have at least one hunters.
Oh, is that right? Oh, yes, yes, okay. Definitely keep him out of there.
I'm more of a gatherer.
Wait a minute, Tommy, do you hunt? Tommy hunts?
Oh, yes, he's who I'm talking about.
Oh, I thought you were talking about.
No, no, I'm talking about the, our member that's present.
I was like, wait a minute.
So for the residents, now, assuming these, you make out okay with planning and conservation and everything is, you're gonna start digging, excavating, how long's it gonna take to build these facilities? If I were a resident down there now, am I gonna be in that building by Christmas? Or is that, no, next year?
For the spring.
Spring.
Okay.
Maybe if it was prefab.
This, there, there was talk of the golf course years ago. That's not involved.
That's been.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Any questions about this plan or anything about this project? So this will be on next month for an update. And we'll get, as, as you continue with the work, if we get a, a report even once a month. I mean, obviously, the, the reports that you're sending in are needed. But if you just send us a, a report, we'll keep you on the email list for the agendas for stormwater. So you know when the meetings are. And even an email that says, nothing new to report, we're excavating this, or we're installing this, or we're in the basic infrastructure of whatever.
The construction schedule, what I expect will happen is, again, we'll, we wanna get started right away. So we'll clear the trees for the community center, get going on that. And since we'll have workers there, start right away on the mitigation area, get that in this planting season. And then, it is dry now, and if we have time in, in my manpower, we can put in the four bay for the basin. If that, if things do change, and we do start getting rain, and that does have four feet of water in it when, you know, it's wet, we'll probably wait to do that until the summertime of next season.
Okay.
But I would expect that, you know, I can let you guys know, we'll have a wetland scientist on site to oversee that.
Okay.
I'll send the commission through Lisa, you know, we can send some updates on what's going on here. As Lisa said, this will be continuing, once we get the building kind of up and everything prepped, they'll be working through the winter on the interior of that.
Okay.
I do have a question. So as far as the erosion controls and the silt sacks and and the construction entrance. I mean, I will be doing inspections, but does the stormwater committee wanna do inspections too, or?
I would think it'd be a good idea if they were done in conjunction with you being there.
Yeah.
Or if you go out, for example, I know Tom goes with you sometimes, but if you happen to go out on your own.
Do I have to invite him?
I didn't say that. I said he goes out with you sometimes. Mr. Ferry sets his own schedule.
You can write in his stuff.
I just asked Mr. Ferry. Seeing as how I can't get my CDL because of Mr. Ferry. Anyhow.
Do you want me to coordinate a site visit?
So, yes, but if you, if you go out and he's not available, then, and we get a stormwater committee meeting coming, I'm just gonna call on you and say, Lisa, tell us about the site visit and whatever. If you do it together, then either one of you can make the presentation. If any committee members are available, and they wanna say, hey, when you go out to Hunter's Hill, I'd like to go out there and see what it's like. I don't think you've been to that site.
I haven't.
So, just, just coordinate with, yeah, just coordinate with Lisa.
Yeah.
When, when we were out there, must be close to a year ago, if not more, this whole area that they're talking about was literally, I call it natural or wilderness. Okay, we saw up to the point of where everything stopped. And then we went around and rode around here, there, and saw where the big, I'll call it septic field is going to be and all that. And so I haven't been back there myself, but, but anyhow, yeah. If, if somewhere down the road, you can do it, just coordinate it with Lisa. So at least when we're talking about stuff, you're gonna be familiar.
Yeah.
You know, kind of like, we did with, when they were gonna do the solar farm, the first site visit at Arujos, when we went way out in the boondocks and saw the, when the trees were there and all that good stuff. Okay? All right. Anything, Mr. Ferry? Mr. Pearson, do you have any comments on Hunter's Hill, other than, whatever you've heard here today? Anything you want us to comment on?
Uh, no, I don't have anything else at this time.
Okay. I think we're all set, Evan?
I just ask if you guys do plan on a visit, just let us know, so we could take you around and make sure.
Okay, everything, I'll say everything will be coordinated through Lisa and or Tom. And what, they'll be the contact persons, let's say that we get the stormwater committee, or some members wanna come on site and make sure that we, we've done that with solar farms, simply because it's easier if there's somebody there, because if you just walk around and say, what's that? Or what happened there? And there's nobody there, you're wasting time.
And as much as there is an existing neighborhood there, you know, everything else behind that is an active construction site. So we wanna make sure everybody's.
Yeah, yeah, we usually require appropriate gear to go on site. Okay? Okay.
As long as you don't look at it like it's a solar farm. I've done solar farms plenty of my life, you know.
There, there's no problem with solar farms. It's in fact, they drain.
Yeah.
Solar farm sites are challenging. But yeah, I think you'd be impressed.
We've only had one challenge in Dayton, and it will, hopefully, it's gonna get resolved. But when I say, my records indicate two thousand and eighteen, and we're now in twenty-four.
No, I, I've designed probably forty megawatts of solar farm sites, and they, they do. It's, they look like they're easy, though. Once you kind of open things up, they get a little tricky.
The, and I don't wanna sound overly critical, the problem was, this one started before COVID.
Oh, we don't need to talk about their solar farm, that's okay.
And unlike, unlike, unlike the other solar farms, the company building this is located in Canada. So with COVID, nobody could come.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
And it was no secret, there was no personal opinion, and I told them this many times. There was no local oversight to, in effect, protect the interest of people building this, and I'll leave it at that. So the other ones came along, but, like I say, they were within the country, they were the kind of in-house considering. And we could, during COVID, we could still move from state to state, but we could, nobody could move country to country, and that added to the part of the problems.
All I'm getting at is, you know, we have a good crew that's working there, and everything's being designed exactly, constructed exactly the way that I designed it. So I'm proud of the work that they did, and if you guys want to take a look, we'd be happy to show you around.
As long as there is oversight that understands, I'll say, how we do things in this town, because we've heard many times, nobody else requires that, nobody does that. Well, this is Dayton. We have not had problems. It's just like, this is, these are our requirements, and okay, we'll take care of it. So, you know, so we certainly appreciate, and the fact that you've got the oversight that you have.
Perfect.
Okay?
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, like I said, once we're done with CONCOM and the planning, get, hit the ground running, and like I said, we'll give you guys updates and let you know what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item seven, approve the minutes of, is just July, excuse me, just July seventeenth. There are motions to approve the minutes of July seventeen.
I motion.
We got a motion to approve the minutes of July seventeenth. Is there a second? I need a second to July, to approve the minutes of July seventeen.
Second.
Is there discussion on the minutes of July seventeen? After all that?
No.
I'll call the vote, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Mr. Ferry? And I'm an aye. All right, so the fourteenth, we'll deal with next month. Unanticipated items, this is just a quick update. Tomorrow, I'm going to Bristol Plymouth. I'm going to be meeting with the teacher in the this commercial design department. We're gonna be talking about the calendar for this coming year. I've got tons of pictures. I'm gonna sit with Heather with the thumb drive, and we're gonna make a selection. I got a lot of pictures, but we're gonna narrow it down. We'll have more than twelve. But we'll have a good variety of, I hope, seasonal pictures, so all the seasons can be represented for the new twenty-twenty-five calendar, which we hope to have in hand for lights on. The other thing I'm going to be showing them is the EPA has a coloring book online, and it's about Thurston, as in thirsty. Anyhow, if we can get this duplicated on, I'm thinking newsprint, like, like, kind of like what coloring books are put on. And we've got some prices on the, the four-pack of crayons, focusing on the youngest members of our community to get the stormwater message out. So the coloring book thing is what we're thinking of. We have bags and we have grippers at the library. I'll be having those for, and hopefully, the coloring books for the November light art there at Arujos. So that's what we're looking at. After that, we're gonna have to be talking about getting more stuff. But I'm hoping to use up whatever we got in stock on that. And I'll give you a report, how I make out with BP, and get a cost estimate on what I wanna do. We got the money set aside for calendars, incumbent from the FY twenty-four budget. So I'll give you an update on that. So Heather, make a note, update on BP printing project for our next meeting. Any public input? Correspondents?
Public input, Woody said he completely forgot his wife is working his tail off now that she's retired.
Oh, you got an email? Correspondents, I don't have anything. Did you get anything, Heather?
No.
Okay. Motion to, third, Wednesday, which is the sixteenth of October. One PM here. Motion to adjourn. 1:00 PM here. A motion to adjourn?
I motion.
We got a motion. We'll motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Bye. Okay, Mister Ferry. All right, we're adjourned, so you can kill that.